Welcome to this meeting of the State and City Council. It is Monday, the 5th of December in the year 2016. Would those of a like mind, please join me for a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and every soul.
Thank you. Let's see, the whole, under roll call and staff introductions, the whole council's here. Our staff is here with the addition of our distinguished senior council, David Roden. And welcome, sir. And what else? Everyone's here that needs to be? Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight? No? Are there declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera? Outright hatred? No? Okay. None of that, then. Presentations, comments from the public? First, I hope I get this right. Julio Salazar? Is that place?
Sir.
Uh, go to the microphone and tell us your name and where you live, please.
Hello. I live in 1125 Wyatt Avenue. Apartments, West Town, Minors. Well, I live over there for about 14 years.
Oh, my.
And the owner always promised that he's gonna fix everything, but he's never, he's never, never doing any reparations. And all the new rental persons, they're, uh, I don't know, but the apartments is not, it's not available for new families come to renter and they're, um, charge you too much. I heard that there's like seven, $700, something like that. I'm not pretty sure, but I pay only $525, which is, uh, when I started there, the other owners, they, they really fix everything. They, um, anything you need, they right away fix it. And I start my rent like $400, and, uh, which is for the new persons, they're getting in there for $700. I think it's, it's totally, totally ridiculous, you know? It's too much.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Julio. Um, is Keith Troutman?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, my, my name is Keith "Renard" Valdez-Troutman. And like I told you the last time at the first meeting, our owner of the, of the building, he's really, I don't wanna have to say the word, but you know what I'm coming out to say, but he is a very bad person. Him and his wife, you know, for them to let us live in the conditions that we live in and to smell, the smell that we smell and going through electrical problems and all us to then complaining to him, and he just either shoving us off or either just not doing anything, you know? And when, the thing what gets me is that he didn't have 30 days to take care of the stuff, over and over. 30 days here, 30 days there, 30 days. He didn't have 90 days. Ain't nothing been done.
What doesn't happen?
Nothing. Like I told you before, he got people running around there, working, promising them all kind of promises off of their rent, or either he will pay them out of his pocket, and he's not doing this. And like I told you, I have evidence, and I'm willing to show you, you know? I'm just done with it. You know, my wife got sick, other people who stay around us, they getting sick and being sick or more. And he's not doing anything. That's about all I have to say, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Keith, did that front window ever get fixed?
No.
No, sir. Bathroom, nothing, and our apartment hasn't been fixed.
Nothing.
Nothing.
The one that has the air gap in it?
It still has a huge gap. And our back window, we have no backside window, not at all. There's nothing. You put hardwood up because there's nothing.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Keith.
Number 12 is the same way. Their front windows out. You can see the duct tape on the window.
Okay. Hang on a minute. Gary McKellup. Gary?
So my name is Gary McKellup. I live at 1125 Wyatt Avenue, Apartment 15. I've lived there for, it'll be 11 years this coming March. You know, when, when Monaco got rid of the, the current property owner, when he got rid of the property management, which was called Integrity Properties, and he started managing things on his own, um, you know, from having the dumpster overflowing, my apartment doesn't have any heat. I've written him, I think, three letters, and when I wrote letters to Ms. Boswell, I wrote them all, or sent them all sort of to Monaco. And he acknowledged getting the letters, but he said he didn't have any time to do anything about it. That was in January. They took down my balcony October 13th of 2015. It's still not up yet. It's been rebuilt twice, not, you know, passing code or whatever, and it's not completed yet. Electric outlets in my apartment you can't use because it overheats and melts the cords. Just, you know, the sliding glass door doesn't lock. And there's been no railing or, or no barrier from, you know, falling off there for, you know, a year or so. I mean, I put a couch in front of the, the door and stuff, but it's, uh, he doesn't do anything. He's told me, I don't know how many times, you know, he's gonna get something fixed and he's gonna take care of it. Never happens. Um, the sewage leak underneath the both buildings, I have pictured the pipe that he took out and had a hole in it that was probably maybe three inches wide by four to five inches long. That's where raw sewage had been pouring out. He's never repaired that. He fixed it and the smell is still there. And he's not done, you know, he put how many other bags of lime underneath. Um, yeah, and then on June 20th, the, you know, city sent out a letter, Alan Pinto's had a letter from the city ordinance telling him all this stuff. He sent us copies of the letter, and that gave him 30 days. Uh, that was June 20th. Then, yeah, and October, I finally got ahold of Mr. Pinto again after two messages and waiting about two weeks. And I said, you know, what's, what's going on? And he said, well, I just had written a letter to Monaco and said, you know, you have 10 days to fix everything. That was in October, you know? And here we are, sitting here in December, and nothing's changed. That's all I have. I have pictures, I have letters, um, I have all that with me if you guys wanna see any of it. I've also filled out the paper for people to come by and look at my apartment, call me and, and tell me what time they were gonna come by. Nobody ever called me. Some nobody's ever came in to take a look and see, but I'd be very willing to show.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I did go look at, I think Apartment 6 here a while back, and I really didn't go inside. I just didn't, but I, the exterior is, yeah.
Right. Um, well, my, my unit just doesn't have any heat. Um, I can use a space heater, you know, at my cost, but it's not the way it should be.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, Kim Ogle?
My name is Kim Ogle. I also live at 1125 Southeast Wyatt, Number 7. Pardon me, I've never been to one of these meetings before, but I wanna start out by saying that I am a single mother of four. Um, my children lost their father in April. I just moved into the complex in July. Um, it was a last minute thing. I couldn't find that thing and didn't wanna commute from Salem to Staton for work because I work in Staton. And so it was kinda something I had to do. And, um, I also, right now, I have no heat in my apartment. I have no electric in my bathroom for the last three weeks. Um, I contacted him and told him that I have no electric in my apartment, and he told me that he would send somebody out the following day, and I contacted him multiple times with no response. Um, today, he tried to call me for his rent. I'm withholding rent. At this point, I'm scared. You know, I don't know what my rights are as far as holding my rent, and I can't afford to move with my children.
Okay.
So it's very discomforting right now, not knowing my rights and not being able to afford an attorney and not having the, the means to move to another place and having four children at home. But at the same time, I feel like my children should have electric in their bathroom, and I feel like they should have heating in the cold.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Brian Goff?
Hi. My name's Brian Goff. I reside at 1125 Apartment Number 2. Uh, I've worked on these buildings as a handyman for Monaco Gonzalez. You have water and pavement problems in probably every corner of that building, folks. They're living, the sewer has been broken under their pipes that Monaco admitted to me that had holes in them underneath, and he simply turned them upright. So if it doesn't overflow too much and nobody flushes the toilet at the same time, you won't have a problem. The only thing that's been addressed out there is your fire code, because he was fined and they stayed on top of it until it was done. As far as your building planning division, they gave me permits to repair the structural collapse that was happening to, to the decks. One of them passed the structural inspection to a certain point, but he's never put the handrails up. He went ahead and tried to put them up after the fact, after your permits had expired, on his own, and Jeff Nealon came out and stopped him and said until he gets a permit not to do anything else. They haven't been finalized, and the last one that's been rebuilt for the second time has never been completed. I'm just kinda wondering what all is it gonna take for you all to do something about this? All these people live there that are from various walks of life. I came in there just to do some simple work for a friend of mine on his behalf for Monaco as a handyman, to help him out, help him out of there. I gave him advice. I have AAS in building technology for inspection, although I've never gotten my certificates for the state ordinance. I don't understand what this community is about if you're not about taking care of the people that live in. This is a very nice neighborhood over there. You have a school just down the street, maybe block and a half. This man's poisoning your land underneath his building by playing powdered lime, which is clustered into the soil while people live there. He's not doing anything about the atrocious smell of sewer that's seeping out everywhere that you can predominantly smell in the troutman's building by walking in. There's holes in the ceiling in several units, leaking plumbing everywhere. Some of it's running hot water that raises attendance bills. Some of it's just cold water, like the unit I'm in, the bathtub has been ported a string as big as my finger. But he's paying that bill himself. The trash last week, there was two dumpsters full before it ever got hauled because he doesn't pay his bills on a punctual basis. When they dumped it, there was still enough to fill it two-thirds away again. Your neighbors in that area and their houses, they're looking at this and watching it. I don't know why anybody would wanna move there. He's a blemish on your town, folks, and he doesn't even live here, but he's sucking the very lifeblood out of the people that live here and are trying to be, rather than pay his rent. They just simply want something to be done about the unlivable conditions. So I'm just kinda wondering how long it's gonna be before you all take ahold of that.
Okay.
That's all I ask today, Doug.
Okay. We'll see if we can get some answers, Brian. Thank you. Do you wanna?
I got one more thing to say.
Well, get up there where we can hear it.
He also has, well, they said about the fire department. In the storage room, he's got the lime, you can see the lime, like I said, I got pictures of it. He's got, they told him to move the alarm mores and all the combustible stuff out of there, but it's sitting around other people's stuff that's in the storage room. Now, we do know when you close down something like that in a storage room, when the wintertime comes, it has no way to go out, so it's automatically, it's gonna start a fire, you know? But we supposed to be dumping tenants over there. This is where he treats us, like we his slaves and like we ignorant, which I don't appreciate, you know? So like I said, too many people getting sick there, you know, and then he got kids running around. When you tell him, he'd be like, well, I'm the big, big man on campus. They can't tell me nothing, like when y'all fired him. That don't mean nothing. It's like Monaco lick it down and just laugh and wave. Until you really do something about it, he's not gonna do nothing. And that, that, I'm just done. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is Leanne Wiley Troutman, and I live at 1125 Wyatt Avenue, Number 6. I do understand that this meeting probably wasn't designed for this, but the last time we were here, it was just, it was just my husband and I.
Yeah, okay. Uh, you're in Number 6. Name, please, for the record.
Leanne Wiley Troutman.
Okay.
I live at 1125 Wyatt.
There we go.
Yeah. What, basically what I'm saying is, we didn't have the opportunity to speak to the other tenants before the last meeting that we were here, and they didn't have the time off to come in and speak to you guys the last time we were here. So that's the reason why we have so many people from 1125 Wyatt here today, is because we are really tired of living in a place that's not suitable for us or our children. Um, everybody here is paying their rent faithfully. Uh, my husband and I have chosen to withhold our rent because of the condition of our apartment and the fact that so many horrible things have gone on in the last year. I have feces literally falling from my ceiling from the upstairs apartment in the bathroom, like, I, I mean, like literally coming out of the toilet from upstairs through my ceiling to my toilet. I don't know whether you guys have ever had to live with something like this, but it's, I have a very low immune system. I've got a lot of health issues already, and on top of it with all that, I have to be extra cautious of germs and things like that. I only have one kidney, and so any kind of infection can kill me. And having, like, being fearful just to use the restroom in my own home, knowing that if something falls on me, I could get sick, and it's falling every day. Our bathroom floor is about to go through where the toilet is. Our bathroom tub, all along the tub, it's so soft that it squishes down when you try to get in the tub. It's, there's so many problems, not just with my apartment. I've been in almost every one of the apartments there because I was helping Boswell from Integrity Properties. I was his personal assistant for a very long time. And so I had to go into each and every apartment, and we were starting on assessing the issues with the buildings when he was there, and then Monaco came and stopped the whole process, or else this process would not, this, these problems would not be going on like they are now. It just seems like because we were trying to use the money he had in the security department to fix what was going on, he put a stop to all that because the money was leaving his pocket, and he wasn't happy about it. So what I'm saying is, basically, I apologize for basically kidnapping your, um, your little meeting tonight, but I just think that you guys should hear from each and every person that we could get ahold of from the apartments, not just my husband and I. It's not just us. There's 15 other families that live there that are going through this every day, and there's little children, two, three-year-old children that live there every day, have to smell sewage, have to live in filth, garbage everywhere, people that, like, they, they're just like you and me. If we could just live in a place that's habitable, we wouldn't be having the problems that we're having now. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you, for now. Uh, I'm gonna ask a question of Chief, and then everyone else can get into it. Is there anyone else that needs to speak on any other topic tonight? We can do this at the end of the meeting again, too, but Chief, I understood that, that that owner was under some kind of court order to either fix up or get out of that place?
Correct.
Am I right on that?
That is correct.
Okay.
And if you want, I can explain where we're at.
If you would.
So, uh, so earlier this summer is when the people in Number 6, Keith and Leanne, filed their complaint, and, and we sent them to call the, the building inspector through Marion County, is where they needed to go through at the time, um, to file those complaints. And, and so they filed theirs, and the building inspector came out and checked on their apartment and the balconies that he could see from the outside, uh, and the, and the fire alarm. So the fire alarm was addressed, and the balconies he's supposed to be working on, which he's not, uh, and those are the, what, the balconies are what he's been, been receiving the citations for, is for not getting the permits and not taking care of fixing the balconies. Uh, he did do a little bit of electrical work inside of Number 6, uh, which was also part of that decree from the, um, from the Marion County Building Inspector. And what we needed to do is, is we had sent out letters at that same time to the rest of the tenants by going door to door with them, and we, what we really needed them to do is to file complaints with the building inspector so that he would come out and had permission to go into each one of those apartments, because he's not able to go into each one of the apartments without them inviting him in, and, and we're doing that request. Uh, so we really need the rest of you to, to fill those complaint forms out with.
We have all of them. Every one of them. I never received one. Actually, when they came, that happened.
I started to call the city and the county in October last year. I've been to Kelly, if the city, and Cindy, and the county multiple times.
So it would be good if we could all hear these exchanges. It'd be better.
So what we'll do is I'll call, call the county and find out what happened to those, uh, those requests for them to inspect the other ones. But, um, at the last, was it last, last month, you as a council voted to approve the, the ordinance to, to allow us to, to go further and to investigate further. Uh, with the 30-day wait period, that goes into effect, is it Wednesday? Goes, this week, Wednesday, so then we can take action based on what that ordinance allows us to do.
Okay.
As far as the things that have not been being done, Alan, the city ordinance, uh, staff has been, uh, trying to work with Monaco and get him to do it, and is continuing to cite him for, uh, for not finishing.
Okay. So there is, there is movement, there is action?
It's just very slow.
Okay.
Uh, we did talk to DEQ about the, uh, the piping underneath being broken, and they were not able to, because it's on private property and the sewage is not flowing into a waterway, they weren't able to come out and, and take a look at it.
Oh, God. Okay. Ma'am?
My name is Kim Ogle. Um, again, is there questions that we can ask, I mean, is it possible to ask questions that get some answers tonight? I mean, what does that mean for me? I have four children, I'm a single mother. I mean, how long do we have? How long, I mean, do we, should we start saving our money right now to move out? I mean, I mean, what?
I, I don't know.
Does anybody have any kind of answer? I mean?
As far as, you asked earlier what your rights were.
Right.
The best thing to person to contact or the place to contact to find out your rights as renters is sue Marion County Legal Aid and ask them, and, and push them, push them to give you those answers.
So do you have, I mean, if we weren't in this meeting and I asked you the question, how long do we have? I mean, as a person to person, a round number thrown out there, what would you say?
It's, answer that.
Yeah. Four weeks ago, this council responded to the Troutmans being here and from recommendations from staff, and enacted an ordinance that changed the city code to give the city the legal ability to enforce the livability issues in rental housing. The way the city charter reads, that ordinance is not effective, does not go into effect for 30 days after enactment. So the law is not yet in effect, but will come into effect on Wednesday of this week.
So that basically says we have 30 days from that day that we should start looking?
I, I can't, I can't answer that question.
I understand.
But, but what the ordinance, what the new ordinance allows the city to do is to enforce certain minimum livability standards in rental housing. In order for the city to enforce those standards, you as tenants must issue a written complaint to your landlord, and the code requires that before the city can take enforcement action, the landlord needs to have a, I'll say for tonight's purposes, a reasonable amount of time to reply to your written complaint. I, I say it that way because I don't have the ordinance in front of me, and I don't remember whether it said seven days or 10 days or 14 days, but, but it's, but it's in the code.
So.
So, so again, that ordinance becomes effective, the code change becomes effective on Wednesday, 30 days after this, this council enacted it. So, um, and then it's, the, the city's got the authority to issue additional citations to the landlord and to get an order of the municipal court to remedy the problems.
Can, can I get clarification? Are you thinking that someone is gonna say, we're condemning the building and you're gonna have to get out? Right. That's what I'm afraid of. That's what you're asking. And also, I'm also afraid, you know, I know that he likes to do things under his own ways over there, and I'm afraid, I mean, this is electrical. It's not just my whole bathroom, I have no lights in my bathroom, no power in my bathroom, but it's also on the inside of my children's bedroom wall, okay? And the heating is all collected, or connected to that because it's, uh, it's coil heating in the ceiling, so I have no heating because of that as well. And, and so I'm afraid, you know, I called him, he said he would send somebody out. I'm afraid that, you know, when I go to get this fixed, if he's gonna be willing to fix it, I want a certified electrician. I don't want somebody that doesn't, isn't certified with electrical come in and messing with my wiring and causing a house fire. I mean, I, I have fear of that. So, I mean, but yes, the house, I mean, being kicked out, like, if they condemn it, how long do we have if, if and when they do condemn it?
The, the residential rental housing code that the council passed last month does not give the city the authority to condemn a dwelling. It only gives the city the authority to issue a citation and assess a fine and to force it to be fixed up. Under the city's previously existing Dangerous Buildings Code, which is what we took action under last June or July, or the last summer, the city does have the authority to declare a building dangerous and to order it to be vacated. Knowing that you all didn't have any other place to go, we chose not to condemn the building, but to try to force the landlord to take corrective action. And we were successful in dealing with some of the electrical issues, the fire alarm issue, and in getting him to take out permits to repair the dilapidated balconies. We've not been successful, as has been said, in getting him to actually finish the work on the dilapidated ba- balconies.
And that's because it's broke.
For, for whatever reason, but that is our next step, is that he's, he was issued a letter, we sent a letter out, I believe it was late October, saying he had a certain period of time to get the work completed. There was a delay in getting that letter out, and that's why we will, at the end of this week, be issuing additional citations for not getting the balcony repaired done. These, the city, until Wednesday coming up, the city does, has not had the legal authority to deal with issues such as no heat, leaking pipes, and, uh, broken windows, or doors that don't lock. Those are all things that will become effective. Those are all things that will become effective on Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you.
So, and let me follow up on that. If you all want the city to be taking action on those livability issues that aren't dangerous structure building about to fall down issues, then you need to have written Mr. Gonzalez's letters and have copies of those letters to provide to the city when you come to the city with a complaint.
Okay. My name's LeAnn Wiley Troutman. For those of us, like my husband and I, I have 15 maintenance request forms from the time we moved in up until now. Is that what you're asking for?
Those are the types of things that, yes, you're going to need to provide to the city under the terms of the new code that goes into effect on Wednesday.
Okay. And you said that he fixed some of the issue, the electrical issues. He didn't fix the electrical issues in Number Six. Since they put a new box in, they didn't replace any of the wiring and it's still popping. It's burnt out, too, of my TVs. I had a big screen TV, a $3,000 TV that it ruined. I mean, there's so many issues with the electrical in my apartment. Half of the apartment doesn't work half the time. I have to run electrical cords through my apartment to run my stove and my refrigerator when it pops and I can't get it to turn back on. And then all of a sudden, it cracks and it starts working again. So, I mean, it's dangerous. People are in fear of their lives. I mean, even though there's fire alarms, my fire alarm doesn't work in my house. He supposedly just brought us brand-new ones. I've had a, I actually had a kitchen fire the other day. My husband accidentally left a slutter in a pan and walked through the laundry room and came back and it was smoking in my house. The alarms didn't go off, nothing went off. I woke up and it was smoking in my house.
So, those are the types of things that you will need to document, that you have issued written complaints to your landlord before the city can take action.
Okay.
Okay, and then get copies of those things to us. Right. Those lists of complaints and concerns, okay? Quickly, please.
All I'm saying is, we doing what Trump asked us to do, but it's just like what Kim and my wife and everybody was saying, it don't seem like nobody doing that. That's all we say. I know we have to do what Trump asked us to do and we doing it, but what I'm trying to get, to let y'all know, is that this man is not seeing the violations and the code stuff with the fines and all that. He tells us personally, "They can't do nothing to me. This is my property." He basically don't, is basically saying, in all our face, forget all us. I'm gonna do what I want because it's my property and that's what he doing. And he's getting away with it, you know? And basically, everybody is getting totally, I'm up here with it myself. I'm done. You know, like I told him, even if I gotta go, and I done been to Portland, I done been to Seattle, trust me, went there. I got arrested three times, but I didn't give a darn because I want something to happen. Because this man is basically getting away with it. Put it up like murder and nobody ain't doing nothing to him.
All right, thanks for that. Anyone else? The council have anything to say on any of this before we move on?
I just have a couple of small little things.
Okay, and you are again?
Gary McKellup.
Okay, thank you.
Apartment 15. So, I was really relieved when I got this letter, a copy of this letter dated June 20th. I had started calling last October, not last October, October 2015, and was repeatedly told by the county and the city that there wasn't anything that they could do, there weren't any enforcement codes that they could use, even though the balcony was not there and the heat's not there and all this. When the city finally got on board, I was relieved, even though Allen Pinto told us, you know, it wasn't a witch hunt for Mr. Gonzalez. And it kind of annoyed me then because I thought, "We're not picking on him." You know, it's like the place is literally falling down underneath my bathtub and I can show it to anybody that wants to see it. You can shine a light and see all the rotted wood and that's above Julio's bathroom. And of course, his ceiling's all collapsed and he has stuff falling down and we can talk to each other and see each other if we wanted. You know, it's an open space there. If you just read through the Oregon Landlord Tenant Rights Handbook, it gives habitability and all of that regulations, but it doesn't seem to be any enforcement. You know, it's in violation of codes, but there's no one that says, "You've got to fix this now and it has to be done literally within 30 days." Hopefully, this will work, the city ordinances, and we'll wait and see how that is, but we've waited a really long time. We're not really, you know, making a lot of noise for nothing. It's been a long, long time.
Okay. Well, we're going to give it a try. We, at one hearing not too long ago, we heard from a bunch of landlords that were just terribly upset that we were trampling on their rights and we trample on them a little more, I think.
You know, I've never had a landlord like this and I don't think there are probably any...
All these, all these rights and privileges, it's all, anyway, anyone else on that? Is there anything else, other subjects, under comments from the public tonight at this time? If not, let's move along. The consent agenda for November 21st, City Council Minutes, folks have seen those, what would you like to do with them?
Mr. Mayor, we actually have three consent agenda items.
Yes.
There's, they're just saying that there's three items on the consent agenda.
Yeah, well, there's a renewal for contract and acceptance of abstract for election results. Right, there's three things there. I guess it's all on my consent agenda. Thank you, Jennifer. All of you got a chance to look at the contract for Mr. Roten? Everybody must have, okay? And are happy with that. What would you like to do with that consent agenda, folks?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll offer a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as submitted. And let's just have a voice vote on that. Would all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same sign. Okay, and let's go on to the next thing, which is, this is our end-of-the-year meeting. We won't have another one before the first, so a little bit of a cleanup agenda. There's no unfinished business, no public hearings. New business, ordinance number 1002, extension of the SCTC franchise agreement. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you, we have ordinance 1002 and then preceding that, 1003, extension of the SCT franchise agreement and extension of the WAVE franchise agreement. I don't have anything to add beyond my staff report, but I'd happy to answer any questions on these items.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. Keith, is the, remember when we were talking about the CCT TV stuff? Is that part of the WAVE franchise agreement?
Is the, you're talking about the educational programming that...
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's part of all of that.
Yeah, that'd be correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Keith, this is a, correct me if I'm wrong, but haven't we extended this a couple other times in the past?
We have. Part of what we've reached out is to start meetings with both these entities to do the franchise agreement. I'd like to try to do a broad franchise agreement, it's something we're going to work through, but discussions with both of them. We have already scheduled the meetings with SCTC starting in January and looking to do the same with WAVE right now, just to make sure that this is the last time we extend these.
Okay. Okay, what would you folks like to do with that one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I need to announce that I do the legal work generally for State and Cooperative Telephone Company, but I don't think it biases me against North War or anything in this matter.
All right, thank you. Anything else on that? Just an extension of that franchise agreement with State and SCTC.
I have one more quick thing. So, the franchise agreement, have we, has I, have I seen that sometime and I just don't remember ever seeing it or...
I'm not, can't speak what you have seen or haven't seen, but the franchise agreements are in place, generally for 10 years. We're talking about trying to do maybe a master ordinance of all franchises into one. Whether that'll happen or not, I can't say, but that's what I'd like to try to potentially work for. The bottom line, it's agreements that we have in place with these entities for right-of-way use and other considerations, so...
Where would I see a copy of the franchise agreement if I wanted to see?
They're in ordinances. We could have, I'd be happy to provide copies to you directly if you wanted.
Okay. I don't want anyone to do any work. Maybe I'll just get together with you at some point and ask questions and you can probably answer my question without having to do that.
Okay. What would you folks like to do with that?
Mr. Mayor?
Couple of possibilities.
I would move that we approve ordinance number 1002 as presented.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 1002 as presented to amending ordinance number 96 SCTC franchise agreement. Could you go ahead and poll the council on this one, please? Unless there's any other discussion. No, go ahead.
Okay. Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Niegel?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Russellman?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Five to zero, thank you very much. Okay. The next thing is ordinance number 1003, extension of the WAVE franchise agreement. And, Mr. Campbell, anything there?
No, Mayor, I think I'll be happy to answer any questions beyond what we've already discussed.
Okay. And the telling thing on this is, and probably either one of these, due to the changes in the telecommunications industry, the city would like to explore the option of adopting a master communications ordinance. This kind of applies to SCTC, too. They're, I don't know that overly concerned, but have expressed some small concerns about, they're not sure what's coming in the telecommunications industry and so that's kind of slowing things up. Anyway, franchise 1003, amending ordinance of WAVE franchise agreement. What would you folks like to do with that? Are there any questions or thoughts on that one?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we approve ordinance number 1003 as presented.
Okay. Is there a second anymore?
I second it.
Thank you, Jill. We've got a motion to approve ordinance 1003 as presented, 1003, amending WAVE ordinance, ordinance number 876, WAVE franchise agreement. Okay. Again, please?
Sure. Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Counselor Russellman?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Niegel?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any staff or commission reports tonight unless there is something that needs to come to the council right now. Business from the city administrator, I had no way, actually, wait a minute. Presentations, comments from the public. Our future city councillor was waving a green slip, sort of.
Oh, no, not a state...
No? Did you?
No, behind.
All right.
I think he knows.
Any other business or comments from the public, presentations or comments? Nothing? Okay. Business from the city administrator, Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our last planned meeting and I know you said you had comments you wanted to make, so I won't steal your thunder, but I did want to thank Counselor Lewis for his service to the community and service on the governing body and wish him well. Thank you.
Actually, took the words out of my mouth. Thank you, Ralph. We've appreciated it and enjoyed the time. Is there anything else?
That's all I have, Mayor.
I've got some reappointments with the council's blessing for Dan Brummer and Richard Lewis, who's here tonight. Dan isn't, but Richard is, for Park and Recreation Board reappointments and for a reappointment to the Planning Commission, Jackie Carmichael. And with the council's consideration, I'd like to make those reappointments, if we could.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to make those three appointments, Dan Brummer and Richard Lewis to the Parks and Recreation Board, Jackie Carmichael to the Planning Commission. If there's any other discussion or comments or questions, we'll take them. If not, let's just a voice vote on this. All in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
You have one? Oh, fine, go ahead.
So, again, you guys have to give me some leeway here because I'm really old. So, what, what, what did we do about people coming when they get appointed to boards? Did we just say that it's a suggestion that they, that they come?
They got an invitation.
That they get an invitation, but it's not required that they show up at the...
Right. I email them and let them know that they're going to be appointed, reappointed at whatever date and if they're able to make it, it would be fantastic because the council likes to see and meet who they're appointing.
Okay, yeah, so, okay. So, it's a suggestion.
Of course, our...
There may be a couple of agencies and positions.
Okay. You're right, though, we did, we did reach out. I suppose we could, what else we could, what else could we do? We could have, you chase them down during your lunch hour and send them an engraved invitation or something, but we like people to show up here if you're going to be appointed to a city board.
It just, it seems like that sometimes these boards are somewhat isolated anyway and to make them be more a part of us, I would like to at least know what somebody looks like that's sitting on a board.
Yeah. Go to some of their meetings, that's one way to show support.
As a board member and a part of the Parks and Recreation Board and a planning commission, I know that Ralph is on the parks, but it'd be great, I know that Hank's always always, means it'd be great to see everybody because a lot of us who are volunteering out there do a lot of that labor, you know, it'd be great to see the councillors and the planning commissioners. They don't realize it's a mission.
Yeah, and there's, and there's one person that can meet all six people here just by coming to one meeting, which would be nice.
What's a few more meetings for a busy group like us? Ah, okay.
Again, just trying to look for easy ways to be more inclusive with everybody.
Absolutely agree.
After council liaison commissions, I'm concerned to be able to liaison from the council to the parks, to the divisions.
Probably.
Yes, there is.
There is.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's, isn't that why Ralph is in every meeting?
What we have done over the last couple of years was ask...
That's why Ralph is at the meetings?
He's at the parks, he's on the board.
Oh, on the planning. No, there is not one, that's the only committee that there's not one on because of, and I think there should be, but in the, I read these regulations when I started here. There's not a representative on the planning because of some kind of perceived interest. Yeah, we talked about this, but some kind of perceived interest, what do you call it? Conflict of interest. So, there is, the planning is the only one that does not have a representative from the council.
Because there's an ultimate decision-making on the part of a council, councillor sitting on the, on the planning commission and so we got sticky. Often, the mayor would go sit and watch and observe, but then when it came before the council for a decision-making and there was a problem as far as possible bias or otherwise and so I think the decision was not to have a direct liaison from the council because that just clutters the issue of the council when it gets to the council.
But every other board does have a representative from...
We haven't, we haven't asked over the last couple of years at least for regular reports from those liaison folks either. Been an interesting couple of years and in some ways, yeah, that's just one, one more thing we haven't done. We can certainly do that if you folks think it's important.
A topic for the first meeting in January, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Sounds good, not tonight.
We start anew.
Yeah, that's right. It's all, it's all new in January. Okay. So, can we go to a voice vote on... So, can we go to a voice vote on that? Those, those three reappointments?
We, yes.
We didn't.
We're ready for one? Let's do that. All in favor of those three reappointments? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And opposed, same sign? No? Okay. So we want to recognize, and we did, Keith, and then I jumped in on it, want to also recognize the help and the good work that Kelly Stevens has done in the planning office, and she's leaving at the end of the month and going to the county. So we're going to miss her. I hope those guys miss her. They'll have to do more of the work themselves now. So, anyway, okay. Business from the council. Anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have two things. First one being a suggestion for the folks that were here that I tried to, maybe I should have said it a little earlier. Maybe we could have the ordinance that we put in place available at the desk for City Hall, so those folks can actually see it and have any questions answered for them when they come to pick it up. I think that'd be a good step going forward to start with. So thank you for that. And I wanted to acknowledge Ralph as well. I think Edmund Burke had a quote that really, I think, is applicable tonight, and I'd like to read it if I may. And that is, "A disposition to preserve and an ability to improve, taken together, would be my standard of a statesman." Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Okay. Right. Yes. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other business from the council? January 3rd, our first meeting of the year, the oath of office for mayor and city councillors, appointment of council president, appointment of council liaisons to board and committees, zoning criteria, public hearing, and an annexation public hearing. So a busy January, but for now, if there's nothing else, a most happy holiday and Merry Christmas to all of you and health and prosperity to all. And to all of you thanks. Yes.